The council is in closed session this evening on three items, Conference of Labor Negotiator, Conference of Real Property Negotiator, and Public Employee Performance Evaluation. And there was no reportable action on any of those items.
At this time, we will have the roll call. Councilmembers Haynes, Clare, Claire.
Here.
Haynes.
Here.
Meredith.
Here.
Shelton. And before we have a moment of silent prayer, I'd like to explain that our city clerk and our mayor are both ill, and we wish them a speedy recovery. And we'll try to muddle through this evening without them. So at this time, if we could have a moment of silent prayer. Councilmember Haynes, if you'd please, in the place of the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now read the video statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the government affairs channel on a Comcast and Shorewest cable system. Tonight's meeting can be seen on channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.cigalt.ca.us. A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
At this time, is, are there any agenda additions or deletions?
I don't have any.
Public comment?
Under Government Code Section 549, 54.3, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. We have one speaker sheet. Ann Ulrich.
Good evening. I am Ann Ulrich, and I am representing the Chamber of Commerce this evening. Just wanted to come here to kind of tell you a little bit about what we've been doing. I should have brought my banner. But we've partnered with the city, and we've been working on a shop local campaign that we're very proud of. We've been having some different events. We've had Safari Car Show that was very successful with the grand opening of the new shopping center after its facelift. And we have had a health fair and a bike, well, in combination of bike rodeo and some different local events to try and, our goal is to partner with the city as the chamber represents the local businesses to try and keep our tax dollars in our, in the city. And not only for people to just spend money here, but to know what there is to spend money on. Because we're often asked, well, can we do this even in Galt? And often the answer is yes, and people just don't know. We have a lot of home-based businesses that people aren't aware of, let alone the local ones that, you know, that have the bigger draw. But anyway, in our, in our focus, we've, we've made our logo, Ruby Stuffers, and the fact that there's no place like home. So that's been our, our goal there. One of the things we're doing is teaming up with the Galt Herald. And I don't know if any of you saw this week, because an article that they ran about showcasing businesses. That's again, something that we're, they're going to try to partner with because on the city's website, there's a very great location that, that we think could be utilized, again, to show people the information about the, what we have in town and what is available to people. And so Galt Herald is also in conjunction with that, then going to showcase different businesses and allows them the opportunity to explain what they're about and what they, what they have. And then coming up, one of the main reasons I'm here this evening also is to ask, I guess, I don't, if I need to be put on the agenda or exactly, or how, what your protocol is 100%, but we're going to have a Easter celebration in March on the 27th. We're partnering up with also the St. Silvergrad Night and Chamber, the city, all the local businesses that would like to be represented there. We're going to have a car show. James Gus Miller is bringing his cars. We are going to have a pancake breakfast and then move that into tri-tip sandwiches. We have, probably going to have a vintage fashion show with Bargain Boutique. And then the Heim Center is going to do a, well, I'm not sure if you want to call it Easter bonnet, but Easter hat contest of some sorts that they're, that they're decorating. So just trying to get everybody to participate of our inside activities that we're taking place at the actually, the ballroom. And so eventually, we're going to have to ask for some road closures so that we can sort of go through town without getting people run over in their vintage costumes. So I'm not sure exactly how, what the, what your protocol is for that, but if we can somehow get permission to do that, and I can talk to boys or whatever it is I need to do, greatly appreciate it. But again, just, just here to thank the city for partnering with us, and I think it's been a great, great success already and look forward to more in the future. Anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you, Ann.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jen.
I was just going to say, the process typically, if you want, there's a street closure that usually goes to boys and the police chief to, and then comes back to the council for approval to close streets on specific dates and so forth. So if you want to get with boys and the police chief and give them the details, then we can bring it back to the council in the future.
Perfect. Okay. Well, thank you.
Thanks for bringing it.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, no other speaker sheet.
Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion, we accept the consent calendar and pass it.
Second.
Any discussion, if not, have a vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. You were shaking your head at me, Sue.
I got your hand.
Okay. Would you like to read the items, Sue?
No.
I'll read them anyway, so the audience will know what's on the consent calendar.
There are three items on the consent calendar this evening. First is the minutes of the special and regular council meetings of January 19th. Second is the city of Galt warrants. Third item is authorizing Sacramento County to act as fiscal agent for S.E.P. funds, California First Program.
Okay. Thank you. So we will move on. There are no scheduled matters at this time. So we'll move on to the regular calendar with the treasurer's office reports.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. City council members, I have to say, I don't think I've ever been up at 10 minutes after seven, so that's, this is great. Before you have the December, the treasurer's report for December of '09, and I'm on, with the California Municipal Treasurer Association, I'm on their executive board. And every treasurer that I've spoken to all have a very, very similar complaint as, as what we have here. And that is, you know, you maintain the safety of the investments, the liquidity is there, but there's flat out, I mean, we all know that there's really no yield in, in any type of investment that, that we have. And that's of course reflected upon, you know, the amount of interest earned that, that we have so far. In the first six months, we've earned $425,000, and which is very, very luck in, as, you know, opposed to previous years. Our yield, our weighted average yield for December was 1.62 on the city's money. The life account, or the state of California life account, you know, we have to, we try, we're trying to keep as little as possible in that, just because it's paying .57%. And which is, you know, it's, that's the lowest that life has ever been since its inception in 1977. As I said, we have to, we keep as little as possible in there, but we do have to keep some, just because we still have to continue to meet our daily obligations. So, you know, that's, that's just the, the nature of the economy. The, we do have local CDs. We have $6 million in, in with Farmers and Merchants Bank, that is at 2%. And $1 million in Premier West Bank, and that's at 1.7%. We have some non-local CDs also, with a weighted average of 1.76. But the majority of our funds are in what are called callable agencies. And I just want to tell you just a couple of things about those. As far as callable agencies go, you know, yes, I can get, I want to say 2% or a little bit above 2%, but I have to go out a period of five years in order to get that 2%. And even if I go out that five years, they're still callable, like say, after two years. So it's a one-time call in two years, and then if it's not called, then it steps up to 4%. So when I'm investing, if I do in fact go out that five-year length, which is a very long time, I make sure that it's a step up. So when it does, or if it does not get called, it's going to be at a higher rate. And so you got like anywhere between three to four years at that higher rate. So I'm trying to plan it for the future, but the fact of the matter is, I can't buy everything at five years because we want to ladder our portfolio and make sure we have thing, items maturing, say, year two, year three, year four, and then eventually year five. So the majority, like I said, the majority of our money is in, in callable agencies, and that's at 1.83%, which, which brings us to a weighted average of 1.62. So that's, it's not the, not the best news, I got to tell you. But, you know, I'm just trying to get as, the safety's there, liquidity's there, I'm just trying to, at that point, just trying to get the best yield, and yield's not out there anywhere that I'm aware of. So with that, I'll answer any questions the council may have. Otherwise, I ask that you accept the report for December 2009.
Any discussion or questions from the council?
No.
Is there a motion to accept?
Move we accept the treasurer's report as given?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Before you go ahead, I had a couple of communications I didn't let you know about.
Okay.
Under communications, I just wanted to let everyone know two things that are interrelated. The president announced his support for high-speed rail throughout the nation to the tune of about $8 billion. And of that amount, 2.3 will be coming to California. And I'll just read a quick note about the press releases. More than 250 applications for high-speed rail funding received by United States Department of Transportation California is set to receive the largest amount of 2.3 billion to begin work on an 800-mile-long high-speed rail tying Sacramento and the San Francisco Bay Area to Los Angeles and San Diego. Which is, I like the language they use there, but part of that's not a given by any means. The Sacramento component is not actually intended in, in the beginning phase of that, although it's still under study. And I've been reporting to the council through a couple of groups I'm working in, that we're trying to make sure the Sacramento component is connected into that. In fact, without it, the train basically turns west at Merced and goes to the Bay Area, leaving the rest of it Stockton, Lodi, Galt, Elk Grove, Sacramento, and service. Why that's also important is that the beginning phases of the high-speed rail, as I've explained, won't be high-speed rail at all. They'll just be more traditional commuter rail that we're used to. In our case, it would be heavy rail, meaning it would be a train car riding on the tracks that are already there, or a new track laid next to it, as opposed to a light rail system like Sacramento has. Without that component, and in my opinion, it's going to be a long time before anybody has a high-speed rail. Without that component, we and the cities nearest have no opportunity to have any kind of commuter service. That's why I'm so interested and supportive of this. Toward that end, as I mentioned, a group of us, and I'm appointed by SECOC as one of the representatives, and then I serve on the San Joaquin Valley Rail Committee doing this, a memorandum of understanding has been achieved and signed, and I'll leave this for council and staff, between SECOC, Sacramento Area Council of Governments, and the Central Valley Group, who's doing the study and scoping for the high-speed rail. And I know at this point, it's getting confusing, but all these groups are trying to work together so that in the interim phase, we can have a commuter service like the ACE train, if you're familiar with that, that runs from Stockton to the Bay Area. So these two items are good. One, that the MOU has been signed. Two, that the funding's been addressed, and we'll just follow it from here. But there are other issues related to this, as I've said. People should be very interested in how this proceeds, because where that high-speed rail is likely to run is yet decided, and the scoping meetings are being held now. So one is right through the center of our town, and two alternates could be east or west of us. So we have our own issues with the current trains going through our town. So I would hope that people would stay very informed, go to some of these meetings. If you do want it, now is the time to let them know. And if you don't want it going through town, now is certainly the time to let them know. Because this is that phase of the process. Thanks.
Councilman Clare, are there any meetings coming up on that?
Yeah, I didn't bring that set. We had them at the last meeting, the scoping, and the gentleman who came and spoke to us. So I can get those dates for you again. And then the next meeting of the San Joaquin Valley Rail Authority is on February 11th, and that meeting will be held down in Atwater, which is by Merced.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Next, the city manager's office, report on capital improvement. Oh, yep, that's right.
That's it. Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you at this time is the update on our capital improvement program that we have in the city. We have about 47 projects, very aggressive program. Most of the projects are managed by our public works department, and some of the projects are also managed by various other departments. We do this every other month, bring this back to the council. We get members of the public asking about what's happening with this project or what's happening with that. That's what this is for, to give everybody an opportunity to take a look at how we're progressing on a lot of projects. We put this up on our website also, so people can take a look at it if they have a question about what's happening with X, Y, Z. This has the latest, greatest update information. There are a lot of projects going on around town right now. We just had a groundbreaking for our wastewater treatment plant upgrade project a couple of weeks ago. We've been doing the tree clearing for the central interchange. It's actually more work up there as you see more and more sky as you drive over that instead of the trees. You can see some of that work happening. We have, we've had some delays on some projects recently because of weather. It's been relatively wet and cold and foggy winter. It has delayed some of our paving projects, Lincoln Way parking lots and the Corillian and Twin Cities, uh, street light or traffic signal project, but we're hoping to get those completed here pretty quickly. So this is an opportunity, I'm not going to go through each of the projects, but an opportunity for, for the council to ask questions of staff. If there's any specific questions on any of these items, we'd be happy to answer them for you. And again, this is information that's available to the public, so we're, we're proud of the things that are going on in the city, and hopefully the community is going to start to see a lot of these things coming to completion. So with that, I will ask if the council has any questions.
Councilman Haynes, any comments or questions?
No comments.
Councilman Meredith?
Yes.
Good.
No, just congratulations to you and the staff. And people probably noticed, there's a few less trees at the central Galt interchange, and that is the beginning of a, finally, the moving into the construction phase. And I know some people don't want to see trees go away. I don't think any of us do, but this is one time I'm in favor of some trees being removed so we can get those two over crossings improved. And I think it's going to be very exciting, and I look forward to the, after the tree removal, the real construction beginning.
Okay. Could we get a motion to receive the report?
So moved?
I think we need to, we just receive it? Yeah, right.
You got a motion? Okay. Then we'll just move on.
Sure.
Uh, next, from the finance department, report fiscal year 2009, 2010, 10, mid-year budget update.
Okay, actually, while the finance department did prepare this report, it's going to be my pleasure to deliver the report to you. Obviously, the city's managers purview, and especially in the light of the economy that we have right now, I've taken a serious look and, and responsibility for the overall budget of the city. So Inez and her staff have done a great job putting the numbers together, and she's going to be available for questions as we go through these issues. But I wanted to take at least a few minutes to walk through some of the major points for the council, and then we, if the council wants to get into some more of the details, we can certainly do that. One of the changes, the steps that we've taken since really the last year, is to bring back financial information to the council on a more timely basis. In the past, it had been, you know, once a year during the budget. If lucky, maybe twice a year. Now it's every quarter. And when we get the quarterly financial information, we're preparing it, analyzing it, bringing it back to the council, so we can make course corrections if we need to. If we're finding things that are troubling or of concern with the various revenues and expenditures, that we have some time to do that. So that was our committed, commitment to the council from staff, and this is just another step in that process. We are just now getting ready to kick off the budget preparation for this next two-year cycle, which is going to be a critical, a key element in the city moving forward, is trying to, try to balance the budget in these tough economic times. And so we have our kickoff meeting scheduled for next week, and we'll bring more financial information back to the council in the spring and the, the initial budget information, so we can get a better sense of not only where we stand right now, but where we're going to be two years from now. So looking forward to that. The report that you have in front of you right now is, is an update through the first six months of the current fiscal year. It primarily focuses on the general fund and the culture and recreation fund, although it does touch on many of the other funds. And the reason for the emphasis on the general fund and the culture and recreation fund are those the funds that are most likely and most heavily impacted by the downturn in the economy. A lot of the other ones are reliant on the transportation dollars or water and sewer fees and other things that typically aren't as cyclical and subject to downturns in the economy. There are a number of areas of concern that staff is continuing to monitor on the revenue side in our general fund. There are several of, of keynote that I'll point out to the council. The first is property taxes. We are projecting right now about $100,000 decline over our original budget estimate on the property taxes. This is due to a couple of different factors. One is the, there are increasingly more and more homes that are being reassessed. But even more importantly, for the first time since Prop 13 was approved by the voters, there is actually a negative CPI adjustment. Typically, what happens is, you know, for those of, those of us that bought their homes within the last seven or eight years and seen the property values go down, those houses are being reassessed. And the county's doing that automatically, and some people are petitioning to get that done. For the rest of the people in the community, it's about half and half. Those people that bought their homes in 1965 or whenever it was, their homes are going up 2% every year, even in the downturn economy, because, you know, their house is still has an assessed value of $60,000 because they bought it, you know, so many years ago. And the way that the, the property taxes work is every year, the cap or the max that it can go up is 2%, but it's based on CPI. So if CPI goes up by 3% or 10% or 50%, then the value of that still is capped at 2%. Every year since Prop 13 was adopted, it's been 2%. And so we had counted on that continuing, and this year, it actually went down. It was negative .237%. And so that resulted in a, a negative adjustment on our property taxes, to the tune of about $100,000, what we're estimating now in the current year. We're continuing to gather and get information from the county, and to be quite honest, the county's not doing a very good job of estimating property taxes for this, for themselves, let alone for any of the other jurisdictions. So the information we're getting is kind of trickling in, and we're, we're having to verify and confirm with multiple phone calls, and there's just a lot of uncertainty out there right now from the assessors' office, from the finance department, as far as, from the county, as far as what the landscape of property taxes look like throughout Sacramento County. So we're trying to do our best, keep up, keeping up on what those numbers look like. But right now, our best estimate is they are going to be down and lower than what we originally estimated. Another big area that we're continuing to monitor is sales tax. Sales tax continues to, to go down statewide. The latest quarter, we were down about 3% from the previous quarter. If you compare the last quarter to the year ago, same, same quarter, we were down 16%. Statewide, statewide sales tax was down 15%. So we're pretty much right at the statewide average. One of the big factors, at least over the last year, was the price of gasoline. And particularly in Galt, we don't have a lot of, you know, big box, car dealers, other things, large sales tax generators, and so some of our top 10 and 20 sales tax generators are, are gas stations. And when, a year ago, when prices were $4.5 a gallon, you generate more sales tax on higher gasoline prices. And so now that the, the price of gasoline has come down somewhat, that's what we're seeing as a reflection, a reduction in the sales tax on those. So that's been a key, key component. Also, we have a number of construction-related industries. We have businesses here that rely heavily on the construction industry, and we've generated sales tax in the past, and those have, have been hit by the economy, certainly because of the construction, the downturn in the construction industry. On the positive side, we have had some new businesses open up, and which have, which have actually, now they're in the, our top 10, top 15, top 20 of our sales tax areas. Tractor Supply, Riot Aid, we have some of these new businesses coming in. So that's a good thing, and it's a good sign, and that is helping to offset some of the, the declines. But notwithstanding those new businesses, we're still expecting about $150,000 reduction over our original budget estimates for sales tax compared to last year. And we're still waiting for a bottom on some of these things, and we're not sure exactly where they're, where they're going to come. On the, on the good news for sales tax, our measure R revenue, which is also reliant, because it comes from the sales tax, is actually up. Our revenue estimates were very conservative, and we think we're going to come in about $45,000 higher than what the original budget estimate was, which is a good thing. And the main reason for that is because we're seeing, when somebody, our regular sales tax, we don't get anything if somebody buys a car in Elk Grove. Okay? Now, if they buy a car in Elk Grove, we get that half cent sales tax from our measure R. And so we're seeing that. We're seeing actual, and not only those large purchases out of town, but if somebody orders something on the phone, or they, they order something from Sears, a treadmill, and it gets delivered to their home, then we're collecting sales tax on that amount, which isn't true for the regular sales tax, but on the measure R, we do collect that. And so we're seeing those, those come through, and so it's been a little bit better than what we anticipated. The other big one is actually another one that Sean mentioned today, and that's interest and our investments. And that is, we think that's going to be a negative hit on us this year. They, just the yield continues to decline, and life is just an abysmal investment right now. But unfortunately, that's our best option for liquidity sake, and we have cash flow needs that the city needs to cover. And so I know Sean and Inez, and we're trying to maximize yields wherever we can, but the reality is, there's just not a lot of places to put your money that you're going to earn much. And so, and, and, and interest revenue is a big source of revenue for the city, so certainly impacts us. The other big area that I, that we're anticipating adjustment is the motor vehicle fees. Again, with the triple flip that happened several years ago, those fees are now tied to property tax. So as property tax goes down, so does motor V. And so we're seeing a, we're estimating an adjustment in motor V of about $140,000. So altogether, for general fund, we're anticipating about a $390,000 reduction in revenues over the original estimated budget. On the, on the culture and recreation side, revenues, revenues are actually up. Our market is doing, had a good 2009. Weather's been a little rough so far in 2010, but we're still hitting expectations. And so we think the revenue on the '06 side is actually going to be better than what we projected in, in the budget. On the expenditure side, there are a number of things that we have done during the year to, to get savings. We have a number of positions that we have not filled that have been vacant, and we believe that the savings that we have, and talking now strictly in general fund, the savings that we have to date, and our various operating departments, are more than sufficient to make up the difference in the loss in revenue. So we don't anticipate a need to make any of those adjustments to balance that out at this time, because in looking at the expenditure numbers, we think the savings are going to materialize there to more than offset for that reduction in the revenue. But it is still in flux, we're still monitoring it, and we're just, again, getting in the process of starting that, that budget. And so we'll know more over the next couple of months as we put those numbers together. And on the expenditure side for '06, that's even, it's even better, because the revenues are up and the expenditures are actually down. And so those two combined means you have an overall savings there, as opposed in general fund side, where we think they're going to potentially balance each other out. On the '06 side, we think we're actually going to be up overall over where we thought we were going to be. I'm not going to I'm not going to go through all the little funds. The information is in the report. The council can certainly take a look through here and if there are any specific questions about any of these areas, I'm more than happy to address them. Inez is available as well. But again, we're continuing to monitor the numbers. We're going to be, we're kicking off the budget. We're going to be, you know, crunching them as best we can, looking for opportunities to save. And as we see trends or things that are off from where we're presenting now, we'll bring those back to the council so that there aren't any surprises that you know kind of where we sit as a city and that we're taking the necessary means and measures to address those, those problems that we see. So having said that, it's not a whole lot of good news, but have, you know, again, we're monitoring it and we're going to keep the council and the community informed on where we sit from a budgetary standpoint in this community. We'll know a lot more in the next couple of months as we prepare the budget. So having said that, happy to answer any questions. I know Inez is available for specific questions as well.
Before we go to questions, this information is available online. Is that correct?
Yep. They can just go on the council agenda packet and they can pull up all this information.
Then they can see what we see.
Exactly.
Okay. Are there questions or comments from the council? Councilman Claire?
Yeah, I have a few. I've gone back to our 2004, 2005 budget and then kind of the budget since then and I've got electronically our 2008, 2010. And as you had said, most of the assumptions that have been used historically don't work anymore. And I've gone through some of the assumptions in the previous ones and the previous budget that Ted had prepared for us, that is what we're now working on now. So I appreciate your pointing out things you and your staff basically came up with correctly. Some things obviously came in a little different than we'd anticipated, some above and some below. But as I say, going back through the, I guess it was my eighth year on the council and many of you've been doing a lot longer, we're in uncharted waters on the economy and estimating budgets. And I would say, given how far everything is out of whack right now, that while you missed a little, I would say, given circumstances, you folks did a pretty good job. Having said that and knowing now that things are where they seem to be and the county's projections and others aren't as dependable as we thought they are, and Andrew had brought it up last time and I suspect he would reiterate tonight, that we're probably going to have to be even more conservative than we've been in the past in some of our estimates. And for the audience, we had a session all day yesterday talking about a variety of things and I think it was pretty clear in yesterday's discussions also that we've got our job cut out for us for the balance of this budget in the next two years and we're going to have to be very careful, very conservative in the numbers we use and those assumptions and plan as best we can accordingly. But again, you guys have a long track record of being very close on budgets and this current economy is just hard to predict. So, and I appreciate, and like all of council does, the continued communication you're sending us. We get our monthly reports, we can see the numbers, we can see the revenues to budget, we can see the cost savings you're doing and it helps us be informed as to the adjustments you're making as we move along. So appreciate that continued communication.
Councilman Haynes, any questions?
Well, just a comment, Darrell, I agree with you. You're right, we are in uncharted waters and I don't think anybody could have predicted the CIP to go negative this year. So I think some of the concerns that I'm going to have, and you guys do an outstanding job, is beyond known when it comes to the rather, you know, the federal government, more specifically the state of California, as they continue to reach down and grab money out of our pockets and that's going to be the hardest predictor that you're going to have to be able to follow. So, but I think you've done a great job. You know, we still got a lot of work ahead of us on this issue, so I look forward to seeing the next budget.
Councilman Haynes, were there any other comments?
I don't have any other comments.
Councilman Harris?
Well, I'd like to thank staff for all of the time that they put into bringing this update forward. I agree with Darrell. I think it's, it's been a great improvement for council to receive periodic updates on the budget so we're not completely caught off guard when budget times come around. Also agree with Darrell with the fact that the economy that we're in right now is extremely dire. We've talked about the fact that the city of Galt has the highest unemployment rate in Sacramento County. And a lot of that lies in the fact that Galt has one of the lowest median incomes in Sacramento County. And a lot of our workforce in the community is considered unskilled and a lot of them work in the construction industry, which we all know has been just completely decimated by the budget and the economy in general. I am a little disappointed at the way the property tax numbers came out. Six months ago in June, I was uncomfortable with the way that we were calculating property taxes. I didn't think we were being conservative enough. And here we are in February and it looks like we weren't conservative enough. I think it's really important as we move on in the next 12 months, that we make sure that we are being more conservative than we've ever been in the past and that when push comes to shove, we're making decisions that will set the city up for financial success or financial stability two, three years down the road. So that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. I did have one question. On gas taxes, it says the highway users' tax account payments have been delayed. Is there a little information about what exactly that means and what the impact would be because of that delay?
Actually, I can go ahead and answer that. When the budget was approved, what happened was they had, the state had a cash flow problem. So what they wanted to do was take those collections and hold on to those funds. So what happened for the month of July through October, they held on to those funds, but we have actually received those funds now. The problem though, is that the amounts for November through March, normally we receive those monthly. We'll actually receive those in April. So those are operational amounts that we use for frequent roads. So yes, it does affect us because it does create a cash flow problem for us as well, but at least they are not being taken away, they're just being deferred a couple of months. So that's the good news. The bad news, obviously, that does create a cash flow problem for us. We do use gas tax funds in Fund Two and Fund Three, so we do still have positive cash flow. It just creates more of a, I guess, just a cash balancing act for us. But we expect that we will. It is in the budget right now that we will receive those funds in April.
And we're pretty sure we will get them in April, or is there any questions that that's going to?
We have not received anything that would change that. The state is actually going through the budgets right now. The governor released some preliminary information in January. There are some discussions about the highway users' tax. At this point, nothing that we have seen has changed the deferral of this payment though.
Okay. I just want to add to what the other council members have said, that we appreciate so much the staff working with fewer people than they, they have in the past, looking for ways to save money. I think the staff realizes, as we do, that we're all in this together for the good of the city. And as everyone else has expressed themselves, we are in uncharted waters. A lot of it is not in our control. So the cooperation and the attitude of the staff and the citizens is going to be really important now. So if there are no other comments?
I did want to point out one more thing. I want the community to know that our city manager's office and the entire council is committed to taking steps to cut costs throughout the community. We've got many of our positions here in the city that are left vacant. As Barbara touched on right now, there are a lot of departments that are operating understaffed. They're still getting the work accomplished, but looking at the budget as we see it today, there's going to be a lot more cuts coming up in the future. And I know that the council is committed to taking whatever steps necessary to balance the budget and I believe that the city manager is completely on board with that as well. But I don't want the community to think that we're stockpiling money into a reserve account and saving it for a rainy day anymore. Those times are over. We're right now operating in a deficit and utilizing the reserve funds that we built up over the last 10 years. And unless the economy changes pretty dramatically in the next two years, we're going to be looking at cutting costs over the course of the next two years, just to stay afloat.
Pretty good. At this time, we will receive the good, the bad, and the ugly on this report, unless there are any other comments. We'll move on to the public works department.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council. The next item as presented in your agenda is a recommendation to terminate the contract with Odyssey Landscaping for Roundstone Park, Monterey Park, and the Monterey Bay well improvement projects. My staff is likely to change this recommendation to carry this over into the March 2nd meeting. By way of explanation, back in November 3rd, 2009, staff first brought this issue forward to council with a recommendation to terminate the contract. Staff pulled the item at council because we received a promise from Odyssey that they would complete the work by November 11th. Following their failure to do that, it was rescheduled and put on the council's agenda for January 19th, 2009. The item was then pulled because of a failure of one day and notice given to the side. We brought it back to tonight. Odyssey has, as a result of what we threatened to do last time, completed the work. That was done last week. They submitted the as-built drawings last Friday. They submitted the operation and maintenance manuals today about 12:30 in my office. My staff has not yet had the opportunity to review either one of those two drawings to see if they are in fact complete or look at the operation manuals to see if they're in fact full. Because of that, the council, excuse me, our council, city attorney's office is recommending that we carry this forward until staff has an opportunity to review and make sure that we have all the deliverables from Odyssey that we need to. There's also the issue of three stop notices that we received, owing over forty-five thousand dollars. We've asked Odyssey to respond to those and they have failed to do so. We're currently working with the city attorney's office to see what we do with those to help ensure that the people that provide service to the city got paid for their services. We currently retain twenty thousand dollars in retention and we'll hold on to that until we need to release that. We're asking the council to carry it over to the March 2nd meeting.
Comments, questions from the council?
Any comments?
Please go ahead.
And I don't know if this is something that can be discussed or not, but have they given any indication of what the core of the problem is? Are they suffering financial problems, shortage of workforce? I mean, have they given any indications?
They haven't given us no indication. I'm hearing through the grapevine that they were having trouble with other cities, some of similar nature, but they've offered no explanation as to why they have repeatedly failed to meet their promises.
Can you describe what the stop notices were placed on for, the three stop notices?
The three stop notices were presented by laborers claiming non-payment of wages.
They weren't paying the correct wages is what's alleged.
No.
Cheating the prevailing wage law?
They, all we have noticed is they were not paying sufficient wages.
Okay.
I don't know if that is the wages they were paid were prevailing or they just didn't pay all of them for hours' work, or whether there was a shortage of all the wages that were paid. Information was not provided to us.
Okay.
Any other questions? Director Holiday, are you asking us to not take action on this? It's listed on the agenda or do you want to take action on it?
What we're asking is the council, preventing council, the amended recommendation that you carry this forward to the March 2nd meeting. We'd like to continue to work with Odyssey to continue the last bit of work they have to do, but our deadline for the agenda reports for the February 16th meeting is this Thursday and my staff will not have adequate time between now and Thursday to review the submitted materials. And so by carrying this forward, we'll prevent the need to re-notify Odyssey and prevent further delays on the project. So we're asking the council to just carry it forward to March 2nd.
So do we need a motion?
Go ahead, Steve.
Vice Mayor, before you entertain a motion for a continuance, I would ask if there's any public comment on this item and in particular if the contractor had any comments they wanted to make to the council on this item.
I will do so at this time. If you have any comments, please come forward.
Just for my information, is there a representative of Odyssey here with us this evening?
It doesn't appear that that's the case.
I appreciate Public Works Director Holiday's request to postpone this to March 2nd, but I think given the track record of the last two months and the fact that they knew that this was going to be on the agenda tonight and they waited until last minute to deliver information today, this is the second time it's been on the agenda. We've already postponed it once. There's allegations that this contractor violated state prevailing wage law, which means they essentially cheated the other contractors that lawfully and honestly bid on the project. I think we move forward tonight with terminating the contracts.
If I could just address those points. There's a couple of, I think there's, there's two different categories before us. As it relates to the performance of the contract with the city, items like not completing the physical work, not providing the as-built drawings, those were performance items owed to the city and if those were not completed, those would certainly be sufficient grounds for termination. The unfortunate, or I guess in part maybe fortunate situation is the physical work appears to be done. The unfortunate part is that the as-built drawings were delivered to the city late. They have been delivered, so there is at least arguably a performance of that item. Without having the time to go through and review those documents, we're not in a position tonight to be able to determine whether or not those plans are in the shape that they should be. So at this point in time, were we to move ahead to terminate this contract, we don't have a very clear record as to what the deficiency in performance is. As it relates to the stop work notices, that is a process whereby laborers, suppliers on the job can come forward and provide a notice to the city that they have not been paid. With every public works job, there's a requirement to have a payment bond put forward. The city has that bond and that payment bond provides a remedy to subs and suppliers on the job. At this point in time, we don't have any information from the contractor. It sometimes can be a situation where the sub or supplier has not been paid. It can be a situation where there's a dispute and the contractor contends that the payment is not due because of deficient work or claims of excess work. And so what happens, once a job is completed, is we withhold any remaining money on the job that has not been paid in the event of litigation between the subs and suppliers and the contractor as to who should be paid. That money would go to the court and the court would decide whether it goes to the contractor or the subs and suppliers. But at this point in time, we cannot resolve that particular issue and also, non-payment of subs and suppliers is not a ground for termination of an agreement because it's not a lack of performance as it relates to the city. So maybe a long-winded response, but I think the bottom line is that, I think that the record tonight is unclear whether or not we actually have evidence before us that the contract has not been fully performed. Certainly we have evidence that it's been late in performance, but it appears that within the last few hours, they might have completed what the contract requires them to do.
Well, let me, let me read part of our staff report. Notice of intent to terminate the contract was mailed to Odyssey on January 20th of 2010 by certified mail. This is key part right here. Staff had forwarded a similar agenda item on November 3rd, 2009. Staff pulled the item because Odyssey had subsequently provided a schedule and committed to complete the remaining work by November 11th, 2009. Odyssey did perform some of the work in November, but had not completed all items of the work up until two hours before the meeting tonight. Now, if that isn't cause for terminating the contract, I don't know what is. We've, we've just let them keep getting by and getting by and getting by and hoping that on good faith, they piecemeal the completion of this project out. I think it's, we've gotten past the point of turning a blind eye. We can't do it anymore.
I would ask the city attorney what the consequences would be. It sounds like there might be if we proceeded with this termination.
Well, I think one of the, one of the things that, that we weighed before tonight's meeting is what would be the, the results of a termination action by the council at this point in time? If, if we were in a situation where the job had not physically been completed, then Um, if, if we were in a situation where the job had not physically been completed, then terminating the contract enables us to get the contractor off the job site, take possession of the job site, bring somebody in and get it completed and work potentially with surety to do that. But in this situation where, um, there is, uh, there's no physical work to be, to be done, uh, we have these documents which we now, uh, need to review and determine if they're accurate. Our assessment was that at this point, we might actually have a increased leverage by not terminating the contract, uh, by continuing to hold the, uh, the, uh, the retention from this agreement because at this point, what the contractor wants is to get, to get paid. Um, we saw that in the event that, uh, we did get a, an email earlier this evening from, uh, council for the contractor that contended that their position is that it would be a violation of their, their due process rights to terminate it this evening because of the fact that they had in fact, uh, performed, uh, the agreement. And so the, the concern was termination at this point in time might, um, actually cost us more than it would, uh, would gain us as it relates to resolving any outstanding issues.
If I could, um, I share Andrew's frustration and I share the spirit of his motion, but given the advice we've heard from the attorney, I probably wouldn't support it, but just for process, he has a motion on the floor. We should let proceed if there's a second and a vote.
Did you make a motion? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
That's okay.
Okay, would you repeat your, or, so can you repeat his motion?
My motion was that we approve the original staff recommendation to terminate Odyssey's contract.
Now, is there a second at this time on the motion? If not, the motion will die for lack of support and we will ask, what is the pleasure, Dan, of the council?
I would make a motion to staff's recommendation of a continuance of the item, but again, in support of Andrew's attempt, um, I'd sure like to have before the resolution if they haven't done what they need to at the next meeting, because I agree with him that they've been given way more than the grace period, but the language of the resolution before us tonight for adoption does not fit the current situation. So my motion would be for continuance to the next council meeting regularly scheduled.
The attorney could jump in, this is, this is appropriate on the assumption that we get it resolved and then deliverables are adequate. Then my suggestion would be that it does not need to come back to council. We just notify council through separate document.
Sure. Now, did you ask for the February sixteenth or March second?
The March second. I do not have time between now and Thursday.
Okay, I stand corrected. I believe I did my motion and then I meant to the March second date.
Are we clear on the motion?
You did make your strong argument, Andrew, but I'm going to go off, uh, city attorney's recommendation. I'm going to second Daryl's motion.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I would call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye. Utility service rate, the next item on the agenda.
Yes, next item for council consideration is a recommendation to accept and file a report as presented by staff with no utility rate adjustments. As we've talked about in the past, the city has historically used a number of different ways to adjust utility rates. These have included the annual inflationary factor, conducting a detailed rate study for individual utilities and our negotiating prices and costs with a contractor service provider. In two thousand and four, the city began using the West Urban Regional Area Consumer Price Index, or CPI, for, uh, adjustments, uh, on a CPI basis. Uh, for the period of November two thousand eight to October two thousand nine, which would be the period we would use to project rates for the next year, the, uh, CPI was actually a, uh, zero point five decrease. So again, we've talked about earlier tonight that CPI was going down. Uh, the new, the contract that was negotiated with Cal Waste also includes a refuge rate index and deferred cost adjustments when you go through the mathematical calculation for the next year. That also results in an overall rate decrease of one point eight five percent for solid waste rates. The agenda report, uh, that you were provided with provides a detailed explanation relative to each of the different utilities as far as the, what we've done in the last year or so and, uh, recommendations. Bottom line is that at this point, staff is recommending no change in the rates, uh, for the next year except as provided. We will be coming back to the council with recommendations to change the water rates and the wastewater rates in conjunction with the water meter implementation. The recommendation tonight not to change rates is based upon, uh, several factors including the minimal amount of the change, it's less than a dollar per month. You know, a dollar's a dollar, but we didn't think that was really dr- really, uh, substantial. Uh, last year's increase approved by council was less than the rate study recommended. We had a nine percent increase for water, I think it was fourteen percent for wastewater. The CPI that was recommended index was four point one, yet council approved only a three percent increase last year, so we're a little bit, little bit behind from last year. Uh, staff also likes the idea of maintaining rate stability because that was better for the short intervening time between now and we've been back to water rates to leave, to leave rates stable. Uh, anything that we would provide in the fund between now and then would just go to offset future rate increases or we go to the fund balance. Due to the fact that there were no adjustments proposed, Prop eighteen did not apply, so we did not have to do public noticing, did not have to have a public hearing. There is no direct fiscal impact if council approves staff's recommendation to leave rates the way that they are, but there are fiscal impacts if the council decides to do an alternative. Uh, we presented a couple of alternatives in the agenda report. One of those would be to reduce the solid waste rates by one point eight five percent. This would reduce the monthly cost for the average household by forty-three cents a month. There would however be a corresponding, uh, cost decrease to the city of approximately twenty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars and this would be equal to the reduction in revenue. So overall, that's about a wash for the city. Uh, the council could also consider reducing the water, wastewater, storm drain or the upgrade fee by the same CPI index. This would result in about another forty cents a month of reduction in the utility plant. So overall, we're talking totally about an eighty-three cent a month reduction. The corresponding revenue reductions though to the funds for the city for the next year would be about twelve thousand, five hundred dollars for the water fund, twenty-six thousand dollars for the wastewater fund, this includes the upgrade fund and about a fifteen hundred dollar reduction in the storm drain fund. Total, this is about forty thousand dollars for the year. If council does wish to reduce the rates, then staff would bring this back to the March second meeting, uh, along with the resolution and the new rate tables. Um, we would ask that this be retroactive to March first, which would be the period when the rates become effective and show up on the bill, uh, going out in April. If I have to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the council?
Um, I don't necessarily have any questions, uh, just a couple of comments. We've historically used the CPI as our nexus to raising rates and I'm glad staff has given us an alternative here to follow the CPI and actually provide a reduction because even though it's, you know, we're looking at a dollar, I, I think it's a strong statement to the community. We've been using the CPI as the benchmark for years and this year, just so happens, the CPI went down. And I, I think, you know, it would be a fantastic gesture to the community to actually be one of the only cities in the Central Valley that is actually providing a reduced utility cost over the next year. So that would be my recommendation, but I, I'm obviously willing to listen to the rest of the council members before we make a motion.
I would agree with Andrew on that one. And I think it's odd, you know, let me just say as a taxpayer is that every time I listen to these rates that go up, say the CPI when it went up, the argument was it's only a dollar or two, it's only a couple of bucks, it's not that big of an impact. That's when we're taking it from the citizens, but when we have to give back, for whatever reason, we don't seem to want to give that back. And I'm going to support Andrew on this motion and, uh, I do believe that, yeah, it's only maybe about a buck that they're getting back, but you know what? They're entitled to it. We take from them when it goes up. I think, uh, they're just as entitled to get it back when it goes down. So I'm going to support Andrew on that issue.
So what's their motion, Andrew?
I would like, I just wanted to, uh, Daryl, first. City attorney, it looked like you was going to speak.
Well, I just, I was just going to interject for a motion. I would recommend public comment and then, um, historically you've set your rates, um, both up and down by resolution, so I think that in the event the council did want to direct a reduction, um, the appropriate motion would be direct staff to prepare the resolution and bring it back for the, uh, for the appropriate reduction.
Thank you.
I'll listen to public comments and then if you have speakers.
I don't know if we have any speaker sheets, but if there's anyone out there from the public that would like to speak at this time, we would be happy to hear your comments, either pro or con.
Okay.
Have you done? I'll go back to the other council members.
Yeah, I, I agree with the, uh, other council members have said. My question would be, um, since that's not the recommendation you brought us, I don't know if you've looked at it, but, um, with your recommendation, there's no need for public hearings or anything, so, um, I don't know if you can speak to it tonight or when you bring the resolution back, can you let us know the cost of making a rate change? Just the process, whatever finance would have to do, public hearings and all. But I, I agree with what they're saying that would be nice to give it back.
Wouldn't, from a process standpoint, there wouldn't be any additional, um, public hearings or anything on a rate decrease. There was a rate increase and you have to go through Prop two eighteen noticing. So from that standpoint, there wouldn't, the only work would be involved in preparing a resolution, which wouldn't, wouldn't take much time at all. The only, the impact would be on the finance standpoint and from the fact that they're going to have to change the bills through the system and I don't know what the work effort is in that and I know it's kind of, that's not.
Each one manually. Um, actually, we could just change the program. So as long as we start to work on it now, if council was, were to accept staff's recommendation, then we could basically start that the following morning and the bills are generated on the first of the following month, so we should have time, um, going forward at this point. Shouldn't be problematic for the department at all. We haven't actually made a motion, have you, Andrew?
No.
You were just commenting. Um, I noticed that we have representatives from Cal Waste here. Did you have any comments that you wanted to make at this time? Other than we appreciate your honesty and your savings. If you would like to speak, I'd have to ask you to come to the podium, please. And appreciate your, your being here.
Jack Viori with California Waste and I was just going to say to the question on, um, how this is handled, because most of the billing the city does for the customers we service, but there is a portion that we bill and likewise, we can just delay our billing, particularly coming back on March second. It's, it's, there is no effort on our behalf to, to, uh, pursue the path that, that you're considering there.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
For council information, there, this time the public works is presenting the next staff report and calculating and preparing all the rate tables that we would bring out since council actually has to adopt the final rate. We can't adopt a rate that's three percent lower than what we currently have or half a percent lower. It has to get down to the nearest penny and actually has to be a rate. So there is, that's probably the biggest expenditure of public works is just going through and calculating what that rate would be, bringing it back. That's why we can't bring it back at the meeting on the sixteenth of February. We'll roll it forward to if council approves to March second, asking that you make it retroactive to the first, so it follows the whole billing period. We don't want to miss it by one day.
Wow, a lot of stuff talked about here, but I need to know at this point, what is the pleasure of the, of the council?
I would like to make a motion that we direct staff to bring back a resolution at the meeting on the second of March two thousand and ten that reduces the rates for water, wastewater, storm drainage, wastewater treatment plant upgrade oversight committee, oversight fund. This isn't very legible in my notes here, consistent with the second alternative presented with our staff report.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Um.
And that included the solid waste? I didn't.
Did you? I didn't hear you say solid waste.
Yes.
Is this the proper motion now? Okay.
So to make sure I know, Andrew, I'm looking at, um, it's not numbered, but it, it results in about a forty cent a month. Is that the paragraph you're reading from?
It's actually both of those combined together. The first recommendation was that we leave rates as they were and the second was this alternate put together.
Okay, so the two bullet point items under alternatives.
Correct.
Okay.
I could, uh, council, uh, the finance director and I were just discussing the state borrowing fund loan, those requirements and we will have to go back and double check the fine print of the loan to see about the ability to reduce the upgrade fund. We would obviously not want to jeopardize that loan by reducing that. The, the impact if we reduce the, the twenty-five dollar per month, that's a thirteen cent reduction in that particular portion of the wastewater service bill. And we want to make certain that, that, that's okay with the state before we do that. So with council's blessing, we'll go ahead and if it's allowable for the revolving fund loan rules, we'll go ahead and include it in a half percent reduction. But if it violates the term and it jeopardizes the loan, we just assume not make that. We'll bring it back and let council know.
Okay.
Oh, is everybody understanding that? So I think we're ready for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. That's got to be, uh, a wonderful situation to say we're going to give money back even if it's going to go into piggy bank, so I can't help but say I feel warm about it. Thank you. Um, okay, let's move on with public works, uh, to the Central Gaunt Interchange Improvement Project, award of contracts for engineering, construction, support services and construction management services.
Okay. Right now I'm over two of my consultants really worried in the back. I'm going to go over three. The next item for the council is a, few recommendations relative to contract award pertaining to the Central Gaunt Interchange Project, where I've seen that council adopt the resolution authorizing the city managers to execute contracts with OmniMeans Engineers in the amount of two hundred eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars for engineering, construction, design support. The second contract would be with Parsons Brinkerhoff, AKA PB Americas, in the amount of two point eight five seven million for construction management services. Uh, in order to fund these two contracts, we're asking the council authorize an increase of estimated Measure A revenues in the amount of four million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for fiscal year nine, ten and that you appropriate a similar amount to the Central Gaunt Interchange Project, CIP fifty-six I from Measure A. The council is aware the interchange project is nearing the end of the design and right of acquisition, uh, phase. The plan specifications and estimates are complete. Right of acquisition is substantially complete. We started pre-removal. Utility relocations are slated to begin this March. Bidding is currently scheduled for May with the award of the contract scheduled for late June or early July in preparation for construction and, uh, more importantly, for utility relocations. Staff is recommending award of the two contracts. Um, as the designer of the project, OmniMeans Engineers, their support is critical to make certain that what the contractor builds is in accordance with the plans. Uh, if there's any questions that come up during construction, any, uh, review, submittals, uh, potential design changes, uh, we contacted OmniMeans and developed and negotiated a scope of work for the two-year project in the amount of two hundred eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. A copy of their proposed scope of services has been included in your agenda report. I won't go through all the tasks now. If I can answer any questions about you might have. In addition to design support, we also need the services of a professional construction management group. In accordance with Caltrans requirements, the activities to build interchange require substantial construction oversight and inspection to keep the project on schedule and within budget. We sent out a combined request for proposal and qualifications in September two thousand nine. We received seven responses. Uh, my staff, with the help of Caltrans and OmniMeans, uh, reviewed all the proposals and we selected the top three for interviews. After the interviews, Parsons Brinkerhoff was ranked as the top firm. Their original proposal was just over three point one million dollars. Uh, we negotiated with them, uh, I believe very, very effectively. Uh, we, we negotiated a reduction in their hourly rate. They just plain cut their costs. They eliminated the yearly cost of living increases for their employees, which is standard in their contracts. I've never really get that with, from these guys before. Uh, also provided a more realistic scope of what the subs just actually had to do. In the end, their original proposed, uh, fee was reduced by almost two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which is eight point three percent of their original fee, down to two million, eight hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-two. This is about eight percent of the estimated overall construction cost for the projects. For typical Caltrans oversight projects with this, this is, is usually a fifteen to ten percent cost for construction management services. Uh, the proposed staffing includes five full-time engineers and inspectors plus part-time specialty inspectors plus administrative support staff. Total is over eighteen thousand, four hundred person hours of effort. A copy of PB's, uh, proposed scope of services has been included in your agenda report. Uh, both these contracts are going to be on a time and materials basis over the estimated twenty-four month construction schedule. Uh, their proposal does include a lump sum for a office. We're currently working with the school district to negotiate the use of some of the trailers to Old Estralita that maybe will benefit the school and also save us some money. Uh, having PB in the contract to be right there, it's right next to the project, be very efficient, very effective. very effective. The fiscal impact will be of the project recommendation is that we will expend the monies described in the two contracts. This funding is coming from the new Measure A. On November 3rd, the council approved the new Measure A contract, where we receive a total of $6.16 million for this year and next year. We were only one of three agencies that got a two-year contract, so we're asking the council basically appropriate next year's monies to bring forward to this year to fund the total of these two contracts. Anything in addition to the contracts that we utilize for right-of-way, for construction staking, or we're rolling into actual construction. The one alternative we presented to council is not very feasible, and that's that staff do this all in-house, but since I have a department of two, I can't possibly provide 18,000 hours over a few years with a staff of two. Staff is recommending that council authorize two contracts and the funding, and the people from Parsons Brinkerhoff are here tonight, if you have any questions of them directly. They were the ones that did the Sheldon Road, interchange just up the road, you know, Grove, and so they're moving right down the street. I worked with these gentlemen for five years in Stockton, and so we have a very good personal relationship, and I'm fully confident they'll do a great job for us.
Questions from the council? Councilman Haynes? Councilman Claire?
No, good, excited. Just make sure you change the logo from Elk Grove to us when you look at the design, that's all. I do want to actually take an opportunity to rethink the passage of the new Measure A by the citizens. That's each time you buy some gasoline, a fraction of that goes back into this community, so these types of projects can be done. And the FTA Board, their executive director, Brian, and also our county supervisor, Donna Toley, some years ago, he and I served on the budget committee that designed the spending plan that all these years later now is in this report, bringing the funding forward. So, thanks for all his support. And with that, if there's no questions, I will move staff's recommendation to the first alternative, not to the one how you figure out to come up with 18,000 hours of work.
I'll second the motion.
I would ask the city attorney, can we do this in one motion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, I'll talk at the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? You've got one, Greg.
Thank you to the two recipients of those awards, we appreciate that, and great work with the old Estralita buildings.
Yeah, treat it kindly, it's special. Were there any other communications that's listed next on the agenda?
I had a couple.
All right.
I wanted to congratulate the Roboi family, Tim Roboi, former mayor, council member for the city of Galt. His wife just gave birth to their sixth child and first daughter, I believe on Sunday night, so congratulations to them. I also had an email sent to me from a resident here in the community with a link to an article that was in the Sacramento Bee over the weekend, about a group called the Westboro Baptist Church that will be in the city of Sacramento on Friday of this week. For those of you that don't know, the Westboro Baptist Church is the church that goes around the country and protests in front of the funerals of service members that were killed in the line of duty. There is a counter protest that's planned on Friday at the state Capitol, I believe they're congregating at 12 o'clock, to let them know that the views that they're bringing with them from their radical church are just completely not acceptable in the state of California. That's all I've got.
Was there any other communications? I thought you said you had two?
Those were the two.
That's the two?
Yeah.
Done?
Good.
Nothing? Okay. Then we will now adjourn to redevelopment agency. Top of the role?
Board commissioners, Haynes?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Mayor, that's here.
Shelton. Not here. Any public comment? I'm just reading the agenda.
No.
Okay. You want to read the consent agenda?
Three items on the consent agenda, minutes of the meeting of January the 19th. Second item, redevelopment agency warrants. Third item, treasurer's report for period ending December 2009. I'll move we adopt the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, we will reconvene to the regular city council with the city clerk's report.
I'd like to mention that, let's see, the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting will be on the 10th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. On the 11th, the planning commission meeting has been canceled. The 15th is a holiday, and we will be closed, and that takes us up to the next council meeting.
Okay, comments by staff? Are there any?
Any comments? I don't believe they have any comments.
Really?
No comments?
Okay. Comments by city council members? We'll start with Councilman Haynes.
No, I think I'm going to make it easy for you tonight, no comments.
Okay. Councilman Meredith?
No comments. Well, I have a comment or two. Quickly, again, it's CACOG, and it's the last meeting. Greg had mentioned to us, our city submitted in an attempt to get the next round of the ERA funds that are coming out, and make sure I'm quoting the number, the Federal Department of Transportation has granted another $1.5 billion nationwide for this phase of funding, and I did speak to CACOG after our last discussion, make sure there's nothing further they need from us, but make sure they know where to find us if at the last minute they need anything. So, it's a, who knows, shot in the dark, but staff as usual is quick to get their response in, and we may just pick off a little of that 1.5 billion. About 5 million would be a nice sampling of that, so we'll keep track of that. The other thing, I do want to again thank our consultants, the Mathis, for their work with us yesterday, and look forward to seeing the synopsis of that and moving forward with the goals we've worked on. So, thank you to our city manager for setting that up. That's it.
That's it. While we're in a thanking mood, I'd like to thank all those who worked on the Winter Bird Festival. Got my husband to go along with me, and I had a great time, and thanks to the staff and everybody that worked on it, I think it was a success, and I think it's meaningful to the community of Galt to have so many people come in from great distances to see what we have as an asset here in our community, so thank you for that. Also, I'd like to mention that February the 26th at 4 o'clock, CACOG is hosting a open house on the unmet transit needs, and I've been spreading the word, so if there's something that we need to address, or at least try to address, we need to hear from you. Also, I attended this weekend the open house for the juvenile probation new facility, and it's a wonderful facility. What struck me the most was the fact that the only juveniles who will go there will be the really bad offenders. I mean, they have to commit pretty serious crime before they'll utilize that. And they have a wonderful school system set up, where they've even done some testing that the, I'm going to call them juveniles, juvenile inmates, have actually increased by two grades their ability in language and math. But their attitude is that they don't want to incarcerate these juveniles, they feel like the best thing for them is to stay in their home, which I don't quite get that attitude, but it was still a nice facility, and I enjoyed seeing it. The other thing I wanted to mention, it was a, almost a secret meeting by the Department of Agriculture, which we were able to pull some of the communities together, it was an open forum on jobs. And there are special pots of money for towns under the population of 50,000, which we're looking into to see if we can qualify for any of that, and cities under 20,000 has a better opportunity. But we were one of, what, 43 cities, I think, in your report, that got to have a say so, so that was good. I attended the commission on adult and aging, and again, Galt was represented very well. We had several of our senior citizens that got awards for their help in doing the survey that determined the needs of the seniors in our community, so they all got certificates, and I was very proud of them. I think I've covered my whole list of things, so go ahead.
One, I assumed the mayor would cover it, so I didn't put it down here, but since he's not here, and Jason, you could fill in the blanks. I believe you folks had your meeting with Congressman Lundgren's staff, and to tie to the other end of that, I was in Washington DC that week, and I met with Pete Eivich, he was kind enough to meet with me on Sunday, since he flew here on that following Monday. And then later in the week, on Thursday, I met with Sandra Wiseman, which is the congressman's lead legislative person back in there, so I'll let you take from there your meeting, it sounded like it went well, and she had touched a little bit on it, but if you'll let the publisher know.
Sure. Yeah, we had a good meeting with the staff from Congressman Lundgren's office, really thanking them for their support, putting through several different federal appropriation requests this last year, received several different awards for our Central Galt Interchange, for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project and so forth, so part of it was a, just a thank you for their continued support. Also, we still have projects, including Central Galt as well as Twin Cities, in for the federal transportation reauthorization bill that's kind of winding its way through, it may not happen until next year, and so we wanted to continue to make sure that was on their list of projects, and they have submitted those projects on behalf of Galt for that bill, so we're hoping to continue those moving forward. And the other piece that we talked to them was a regional law enforcement training center, including a shooting range and other opportunities to see if we could get some federal funding to help facilitate that, because there are federal agencies, state agencies, local agencies that train there, and should maybe get some opportunities to get some federal funds to make that happen. So it's a positive meeting, they're very grateful for the opportunity to meet, and they would share our appreciation and their various projects back with the congressman, so he was aware of the issues.
Okay. Anything else? If not, we will thank everyone for coming out, staff included, and we will adjourn this meeting at 8:25. Okay. Well, we didn't do exactly like we meant to. It is everything you want to say.
We'll follow up with the crowd, the things that you guys do up here. We need to get him back here, Andrew, make sure that he acknowledges what the council did.
Thanks for your help. You can't account for the way some of them all. Yeah. But that's equal to it.